Well, Mr. Cranley can give you that perspective, you know. And I, he told me on the phone the other day while we were talking about setting this executive session up. I said, is there, you know, I'm being asked, is there anything that we should be fighting for at this point? And that's when he gave me the information. So, but you may want to hear it firsthand before you make a decision.
Well, I do. And I feel like that as along the vein of what was asked to us by the common, you know, we're representing the people. We're, I'm concerned about the cost and everything. And I don't feel like that I could make all the decisions if I don't myself hear this and know what we're really dealing with.
Well, with your permission, I'll say I'll make that call.
Yes.
Bill, I think the issue is whether or not it's public information. It's not what's on the recording, it's whether or not it's public information.
I think it is public information.
I, you know, when you make a decision whether or not to pursue based on what you hear, it makes it look like you're sitting in judgment of something. You know, you're deciding that you should violate the...
Obenour?
Mm-hmm. Access to public records, yeah. I mean, it's a simple thing. It's either a public information or it's not.
I'd like a response to that. There has been, there have been cases that have gone up to the Court of Appeals on the access to public records and the law enforcement exception. And it's not set in stone that this, these are public records. I mean, I stated my opinion and mine was just opinion. It wasn't based upon necessarily a president that said these are public records. But the courts can come down different ways on these things. So, I don't think the law is necessarily settled on this. I think there, I think, I mean, the point was made that it contained information that was sensitive in nature that would be held for prosecution. That, that's kind of why the law enforcement exception is there. If, right now it's being interpreted based upon what kind of an agency it is. Now, the Court of Appeals, if this case goes, we might say we agree with the public's, public agencies that yes, it doesn't, it shouldn't make any difference who runs your E-911. If it's, if it's a kind of information that's being protected in other cases just because this patch is coming out of the sheriff's department instead of out of the civilian E-911, should that make the difference or not? I think the courts can come down differently on this. That's why you decide whether or not you're going to appeal it.
I want to talk...
And then you get, then you get more than one Court of Appeals. They don't have to follow the Court of Appeals in another case. And that's when the Supreme Court gets involved if there's a difference between the districts of the Courts of Appeals. So, that, the trial court is made a judgment, that judge will subject you to appeal. And there are reasons why people take appeals, you know, to make case law that serves the public, serves the interest of law enforcement, which helps the public. So, you know, there's more than one public interest to be served here. It's not just the public's interest for the disclosure of the record only involved here. It's also the public interest in bringing people that cause quadruple homicide to justice. That's what it should be going to. So, I've said probably more than needs.
I don't know what I can do. It comes out of the... Let's go on to website on here.
Actually, I'd like to table this till the next meeting, but I want to talk to you about what I, it is. Talking to our IT guy and the website and different department heads. He's looking into the fee that will allow the department heads to upgrade their own information instead of the auditor's office for, or if not the, the ABC area plan director, the Wagner did that before he left and then transferred over to me, which we kind of kept up. There's a couple of things that we have not done. We do our job postings and we do everything like that. We'll still continue to do that. But I've had department heads say they would like to, you know, upgrade theirs or update their information. And I would love to that. But I've gotten different information from him since. So, I need to really look into how much it is going to cost. It was supposed to be maybe $10,000 a month for 10 different licenses for them to upgrade. Sounds a little cheap to me. But if that, I want to know if you're, will allow me even look into it first of all.
Well, it takes some work off of your department and I can concentrate on that. If they want to update their own information, if it's put in, it's on them and not your office.
And that way they would have their own passwords. So, they would know who did it, who did what on there. And it won't be just the one that I have created, so.
It's one of the changes on that.
Only on their, yeah, only on their department. So, I know Randy is looking into it. And he gave me some different information that I haven't looked at yet. So, I'd like to table it and remember if he did want me to pursue it.
Motion to table, who can form a agreement, otherwise we're...
I think basically everyone's wanting to use the website.
Right.
And they should be after it.
Right. So, say like the health department, if they wanted to upgrade their shot records, you know, shot information or the treasure hospital, different dates in for tax time because that happens, you know, they can do their own. So, so if you give permission to pursue it and...
Motion to pursue table till next week.
Sorry. Mr. Cranley, he will be calling in to the auditor's office at 4:30 PM on Wednesday for the executive session. And he said that sure, you can all listen, probably should do so individually to the courts. Do you want to do that whenever it can be arranged with, yes? I, I think they should, I, I, no, I think they should do it individually.
I'd like to...
I think you need to listen to it before, but I have to. You have to. Yeah. Do you have permission to do so without, just arrange it with the director?
Okay, next item.
Is the holiday scheduled for 2020? I could...
Is that in here?
Yeah, it was on the top. I put two different sets there. One mainly is because of Martin Luther King Day, what you're going to do with that. And in years past, you've changed it so to Independence Day.
The only difference is Martin Luther King Day.
Yes.
Is whether we're going to give them a four-day weekend or go give them a three-day weekend? There's no reason to give them the July 6th off. We can just keep Martin Luther King Day on January 2nd.
Either way.
Down here to July 6th, July 4th is the Saturday. So, this will give them Friday, Saturday, Sunday, a month off. Before they, or you put it to only in January 2nd when it's...
Yeah, my, my point is not whether we're giving them a three-day weekend or a four-day weekend. My point has always been that 20th of January is most likely a snow day.
And we normally, last year we moved it where they give them, move theirs on...
County highway?
Yeah, county highway. What is the state doing?
They're going to do it on the 20th.
The state is doing, yes, they do the, they always have. That's the only thing that we do not usually follow. But I did vote up them so I could have more effect.
It'll also be nice waiting. Then they do say we're not being fair to all the employees by allowing the highway. They're just, they had eight, most of them choose this.
Okay, so what's the pleasure?
Did I call them this year or...
Oh, I had some phone calls last year because we didn't allow everybody else to do it. We just allowed highway to do it.
Which...
Well, we did have a four-day weekend last year or this year.
Didn't, I don't know.
On the fourth?
Fourth was a Friday.
Right, and we had the third and the fourth off.
Well, since it's on Saturday, you can't Friday off or Thursday. I say we take it on January 20th with the exception of...
But you are right, we did have phone calls. Because one year we did let the highway have it. And then other people were upset, so you changed it. It doesn't matter. Decide this time.
Yeah, I'll do it. That way I don't have to get any more phone calls.
I didn't get it.
Well, remember, I come from a place that don't get to use it that many because if you work it, then you have to.
But they get another day off.
Right.
I'm just, there's other people that are saying...
I'll make a motion to Martin Luther King Day until August 6th. Give them a four-day weekend.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to make Martin Luther King Day for Cali on July 6th. Oh, I favor that one. Say aye. Move now, make 9/11, question 2. Okay, next item. CCI revised contract.
Deferring to Ted.
You got the, the revised contracts.
Yes, yes you do.
The only changes that have been made here on, I'd like to say what they are. Mine is the fee reduced and the, as promised, the cap is taken off. If construction, if the construction period, also remove the cap in pre-construction and remove the cap on how long the construction period is. What removing the caps means is that if the pre-destruction and construction take longer than whatever length of time they take, there's no additional fees paid. He receives the fees for those periods no matter how long it takes. So, those are the changes in it. And I didn't have any other issues with it or was no other issues with it, so.
How much has the fee that you've charged?
Rise down to...
Four quarters?
Four quarters?
From five to four and three quarters?
Yeah.
Would that be 11/11, is that the one?
Yeah.
It's section 11/11, I believe.
4.75 appears, yeah, 11.122 to page 17. Yes. He is toward compensation. Yeah. Article 11, page 17.
Yeah, thank you. So, if he can build it, you know, we save 14 and a half. If he can get it to 13, then we only pay him on the 13, if he saves us that much money.
Thirty-six thousand 250 dollars. Well, the way I figured it, my, my division is right. It's thirty-six thousand 250 dollars sitting. That's pretty good.
I'm seeing what the word...
Huh?
It's about the cross of the month, by the way. Last time we figured it, it was fifty thousand dollars.
I should tell you that Josh very graciously sent me an email that said he'd like to meet with me one-on-one. Would this sound good? I was going to email it back yesterday and never got it. I'd like to do that, Josh. I appreciate your offer and very much like to sit down with you and talk.
Well, that joint meeting, I think it was kind of a cluster of both. We didn't have the contract to present to them and they didn't have a chance to go through. Which I can understand why it wasn't given to someone else and give to somebody else to come in and say, hey, I can do this better than what this contract is. I still believe Jack's the guy for us to build and I think he'll save us a lot. I'm going to make a motion to send this contract to counsel for approval.
That hands me up to endorse it, right?
We can endorse it after the approval.
You can approve the contract and forward to the counsel for, to request that they appropriate funds for it.
So, the motion...
You're not executing the contract though.
What motion do I need?
To approve and to approve the contract and request the counsel to appropriate funds for it.
Your motion?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second to approve this amended contract and to request to the counsel their appropriation of money. All in favor of that, say aye.
I did get an email forwarded to me that the other individual, I can't remember Jonathan's name, emailed and said that they're no longer going to receive what we were...
I heard that, not from an email, but just through a... Okay, telegram, okay?
How old are you?
I received that too. And I think I'll read it in your own email, so you might want to report it.
Okay, I get it.
I think so.
Okay, next up on the agenda is Cameron Yates.
You've got no time, but you're supposed to be here at 10:00. Where you been?
Mine is early.
Commissioner Brown, before he speaks, reminder that we got that courthouse security meeting with the judges in ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
I can, I can talk real fast.
Okay.
Last month, the APC board approved a rezon for Mr. Wood. You can see on the property, you guys should have a match in front of you. He's basically wanting to make this a separate parcel so he can build a home approximately in this area. Currently, you can't have two, you cannot have two homes on a parcel. So, he's wanting to rezone it like, which you can see, he kind of falls into that. So, like I said, the APC board approved it.
Is he going to be the only home on that?
He is, yes. He's just basically, it's going to be in the middle of the woods. It's going to be a nice property. He's submitted a survey for the half acre that the current home is on that will be broke off. Pretty cut and dry, actually. Yeah, so he's got a driveway to the acres already, so.
And he can give us permits for something, you all have to look into the regular subject, right?
No, he's not even close to that. This is Oakdale is over here. So, this is the road that goes down past Oakdale. So, he will have to go through the health department and all of those separate. This is all basically the woods. Where's the brief?
Right here.
All right. Under, yeah. So, he has to get, he has to go through the whole process. The health department and everything. It's basically a workflow right now.
I thought maybe this would be part of that other one, the rezone from Oakdale.
No, this, nothing to do with, this guy's just wanting to build a nice home in the middle of nowhere. So, he couldn't currently do that, was the way it was owned. He wants a separate parcel for that. He's going to end up selling the little half acre. It's a, there's already a existing house there. It's real high, it doesn't flood, so that's, he's been very patient with us. He just wants to get moving.
And about 100% of Oakdale?
Correct.
Can you recommend it to him?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's...
If they can trust it, you mean the new guy.
Okay. Four minutes into my 10:00, Mike Kennedy, so.
He's mean. That will see an issue with him.
It's not, it's not. Now, if that floods, then we all should probably run.
Does that come from high risk?
Yeah, it's way up there. The little house right here is, it's way up there. It doesn't look like from the picture, but there's a really high bank right there. So, he is in accident report. Like I said, if he floods, then it should all probably be getting out of there. Yes. Yeah, he could not build, if it wasn't a flood zone, he cannot build a new residential structure. So, it wouldn't have got to this far.
Yeah, I've got a motion in a second to allow the rezoning request. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, Bill.
Is there any additional business come before the board? Yes, Ms. Angie?
Yes, I have an issue. On Co-Rate, we printed off the budget and in our hazardous property cleanup, we had $3,500. I had three yards mowed that were not mowed all summer long. Then we went back and Beth pointed out to me that the hazardous property fund didn't have any money in it because it was transferred to the unsafe building fund.
Transferred to what fund?
Unsafe Building Fund.
Unsafe Building Fund, okay.
So, I have no money in the fund to pay for mowing, which...
Stop paying, Jen.
Pretty much, which I don't understand, well, I didn't understand at the time that we were going to lose that fund and allow them to mow properties now. Because hazardous property cleanup is not the same thing. The unsafe building fund is for condemning properties and having them torn down.
I can't remember whether it was you or the counsel when they approved it. Is that they were taking your money, the 3,500 in your, your budget and the 3,500 in their budget? And then I believe it was 8,000 from Riverboat? And the reason that was still in there, I mean, I could have done it last month, but the reason we didn't for the month before is we would have to advertise Riverboat and get that so I could even move it. So, we were going to do it all at the same time. But when they set up that fund, that's what the agreement was, to start that fund so they could have money in there.
To remove the unsafe property.
And she brought the board back last time.
How much was the moment it took?
Well, right now I have one for $80 and one for $250. And I have one that I don't have the bill on yet, so.
Is this still a bid process?
It's a bid if I can get people to bid then.
You've got $230 right now and you've got another one, I'm pretty happy to fill one.
I have two, I said, all right.
Eighty and 250, one to you?
Huh?
$80 for one, 250 for another one. And then I have one more that I haven't received a bill on yet.
But you can't get how much?
Probably about 100.
Is there anything you can transfer to for now until they get this figured out?
I don't know, that's not my part, so I don't know how to, I don't know what...
Transfer from the paper, I mean in your budget.
Budget?
I don't have anything in my budget that pays, it all got taken away. So, I don't know what else I'm going to use property cleanup for.
We can look at it together, try to figure out.
I thought you said I had to ask them about what, what, what do I do for future mowings if I don't have a fund anymore?
I want to ask a question, that 3,500 moved already or is that next year?
It moved already.
It's moved already.
Then what property do we can do?
We haven't.
Is that me? Me? Oh, thank goodness.
We moved it and then I, under the assumption that you were going to start like a fining process to start building income coming in to fund these lines.
But what do I do when we mow properties? What do I use for that? I have no fund now for that.
Do you bill the people that own the property?
Yes. But they never pay.
You have to pay the contractor upfront and then it takes forever.
And, you know, it's already been quite a while and he hasn't been paid and, I mean...
I think this is where the program was supposed to start, where you bill them once. If they don't pay it, you, you take legal actions and start getting them to collect.
That doesn't pay the person that knows it. They don't want to do this for free. I mean, they're, you know, they want paid...
Is there a reason you can't take it out of the condemned property?
It says according to this, Beth gave me this form and there's nothing on here that falls under the stipulations that I can take it out of that property account. I thought that you could. You said you didn't, you thought that...
I didn't say either way.
You said you thought it was pushing it.
No, 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 I looked at you funny. I remember this.
Okay, it says money in the unsafe building fund may be used for expenses incurred in carrying out the purposes of this chapter. Can you twist it to make it sound that that's okay?
I think...
Question?
To me, that sounds like the purposes of condemning a property and not mowing a property. I've tried to twist it, but...
So, these properties that you're mowing, are people there or are they going to end up being condemned properties?
Condemned.
I think you could reword it to, to put it all, somehow get it in that same line item.
Every situation is different on what are we doing?
Well, she's reading from is the unsafe funds statute.
Oh.
We cannot change the statute.
Oh, okay.
And interpret it that way if you'd like. I, that somebody's going to have to have it in Ryan's life and put it with bills so the state board and council will, no, that's not, I just didn't do it.
And so, my question is, do I stop having properties mowed now?
I think right now you should stop having it mowed and we figured this out now. Don't you, Percy?
Yeah, I kind of question why we're mowing now when it's getting ready to die.
No, they're all built, crazy. I mean, they're...
Yeah, but you're not going to mow anymore.
They've been trying to get the people to pay them and they're not paying them. So, I'm saying these need to be paid.
So, these people haven't paid. We can pay... So these people haven't paid, we could pay them, and then you could pay lean on their properties.
Yes. But what do we pay them out of, that's my question.
We're gonna have to.
So who's, can we interpret that? Who's gotta interpret?
I don't know, do you wanna see this, about how?
I got an appointment with the judges, eleven o'clock.
I know.
I think, I think the best way is to try finding some money in her budget to transfer into that line for this year, and then we'll have to look at next year's and, because I doubt if they put any money in there.
I'll, I'll look at it. I'm confused, because I thought that was in there until the end of the year, and then they transferred, I, I, that's what I was confused on.
Who's your counsel group?
Crazy.
No, that's awesome.
I'll look at it.
No, because you were supposed to start implementing it.
I would, I would just request if we hit this down quickly, because these people.
Need paid.
Did the work, and they need paid.
Well, a transfer can be done on November twenty-first, if she can figure out where to transfer that money, until we can figure out a solution.
How much toll does this need?
I don't have a third bill yet.
She said close to.
I'm sure if you call them, they give you the bill amount, though, if you find, I'll come down after this will find out.
Alright, so you put off to November eighteenth, I guess, right?
Like four hundred and thirty, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
But will it be paid on November eighteenth, or is that when I submit it?
You will have to, you can submit them, and then ask for the transfer on the twenty-first, and they would be paid on December the second.
Uh, I'm going to have to turn the video on.
I think, uh, any public input? Yes, Ms. Devin.
I'll make it short, it's information only.
It was noted at the last board zoning appeals meeting, that there is a discrepancy in the differences of the zoning ordinance.
What's the one to use?
Well, I guess you could say that, um, and so I decided that I was gonna look at all the minutes of the commissioners' meetings. Uh, to find out when, and so I, I, I went from fourteen to the end of eighteen. And there wasn't much there, but then I looked in the ordinance book, and there was an ordinance that said you all had approved a change in, um, seventeen? Yeah, in April of seventeen. As it turns out, you didn't.
And I'd like to speak on that.
Yeah, yeah, Beth.
And I wanted to explain to her, and I told her this, that, um, when we, when I came into office.
Yeah.
The ordinance book was not completed, but way back from fourteen on, we found these ordinances, I had someone copy them all into it. If you look at some of these ordinances, the auditors had not been signing them, so this is just the same thing, it was in here, uh, in a stack, that I, when we came into the office, we found nothing was signed, but that wasn't unusual for us. So, we went ahead and put it in the ordinance book, not thinking, none of us were there at this time, because that was back in June of seventeen, right before I came in. So, my person went ahead and put it in the ordinance book, that is the only reason it's in the ordinance book, nobody told us to put it in there, and I, there were things that were done. I have confirmed with Ted Johnson that this is not unadopted, so it should not be out there, and as you can see, I've got it here in my hand, so it's not in the ordinance book anymore.
I apologize for missing part of that, the judge is not ready yet.
And, and that's right, I mean, you know, she's done all that, and, and we talked about it, the concern is, is that it's written in ordinance form, so, it looks like it is, kinda looks like it is, an ordinance, and. It's just, you know, now that, now that there's been this discrepancy, I just wanted you all to know, that.
Just because it's in ordinance form, that's how they have to present it, doesn't mean that, I mean, even though that they were presented it, doesn't mean that they adopted it, so when they didn't adopt it, it should have probably been.
Well, yeah.
Taken back, or put in a file saying unadopted ordinances, for all I know, I really don't know, but it was a, um, it's not been adopted.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, just so, in case you guys didn't read the comment, you know, there's a discrepancy between some of what's in the zoning ordinance again. And it has to do with CAPOS, it has to do with setbacks, and what the area, what you measure from, so.
Well, I think you were looking for something specific, and that's why we found this.
I was, I was, I was looking for, so.
That change.
The change.
The change of, of, of the setbacks, yeah, uh, of, of the language, whether or not it's from the building, uh, that the, that the pigs are in, or, you know, the, the barns, or whether it's from the pens. Because one person has pens, this is the zoning, this is the board of zoning appeals, and one person has the buildings. I don't know how you could issue a permit, if you don't know what, yes, and I didn't go to Cameron with this, because he's there, um, and I just thought he'd be overwhelmed, so.
What, is that just the current way that they're doing it, from building?
If I can just, part of what's going on with this is, yes, the ordinance says that there was a change on the seventeen, in seventeen. But, the changes that are shown in the description didn't include the fact that the specification for the CAPO changed, the outside pens was dropped. In the ordinance in seventeen, but it wasn't documented as having been changed.
And I was looking for that language, you know, when, when was that omitted?
Because what it did is, the previous one had included outside pens as where you measure from. The language in the seventeen one dropped the outside pens out, which now changes things. And what Everett Snowberger, president of the Board of Zoning Appeals, was bringing up is that there, he feels there needs to be better documentations of the changes. To track everything back and to make sure, because his book wasn't updated to the seventeen version of the ordinance, but some of the other books had been. So, part of the BZA had, books had said it was from the building and the lagoons, other members had the ones that included the outside pens. So it's, it's an issue that goes back to documenting and controlling the changes. So.
Your attorney, your attorney should have been doing that.
Well, that's, that's where this whole thing got started.
That's water under the bridge, it's gone, it's messed up.
But who corrected?
Well, they're gonna have to correct it now, they're gonna have to decide what they want and bring it to us.
April.
Yes.
This is a topic that's been hanging around for about four years, is we.
Yeah.
You guys are the only ones that can change an ordinance.
We, well, they usually write them, so.
The commissioners have to change the ordinance, the area plan cannot, you guys can discuss it almost yourselves, but it ultimately comes back to you guys. So, what precipitated this was, there seemed to, there appeared to be two sets of rules, whether intentionally or not. But thankfully Debbie is taping the meetings, and I actually have an area plan meeting where CAPO discussion came up. And the discussion again is on these pens and lagoons, and it was supposedly changed in seventeen. We were before the Board of Zoning Appeals in January of seventeen, and held to one standard. I believe if you remember, the Rad Keys were held to a different standard later in seventeen. And when I proposed the question at the end of the area plan meeting this last month, we were told it didn't apply. So, if you're permitting these facilities, which you guys have agreed to do, it seems that there should be some common language. That is held to consistently before we continue to permit. I mean, I'm all in favor, if you guys wanna declare a moratorium on it today, that would be great. I mean, there's three of you here, and it's been a constant problem for over forty, actually, close to twenty firsts.
Ordinances relating to planning and zoning, uh, legislative body can initiate, and had in the past initiated where you wanted them to adopt something, and. That information goes to the client commission, and they, the statute, they're the ones that draft the text of any changes in the text, and who, uh, some ordinance unifies all the ordinance. And then it comes back to the commissioners, uh, and then commissioners actually do the adoption, but providing each other have the initial approval of it, with or without a favorable recognition, just that by the fact of nature.
I believe it was you Steve that suggested from our committee, and I'm gonna bring it up.
Yeah, back when we were going over that, what's the book called, the U D O or something like that?
You didn't adopt the U D O.
You didn't.
U D O, yeah, I knew, I knew we didn't adopt it.
No.
And I went to Doug and said I'd like to go through the book, and make changes of people's concerns, and that's never happened, because no one ever wanted to set that up.
I would you, I would ask you to set a committee.
I don't know if the committee would do good right now at this time, since we have a new, new director, I think we need to go back to their attorneys, and have them go through all of them and find the differences. And sort them out between themselves and present it up, and we'll decide.
What attorneys? Area plan has one attorney.
Yeah, their attorney. Their attorney.
So you're abandoning, I mean, and I just wanna make sure you're clear, I mean, because it was you Steve that thought the county should form a committee.
Right.
To discuss the CAPOS and get it under control, and get things reasonable, and you've not followed through.
I've tried to follow through, but I could get the last director to get him into it, but I'm just one person that sets up here.
Well, I mean, a committee kind of employs more than a commissioner.
Well, I was trying to get him to set it up with us, where we can sit down one-on-one and go through the book, but that never happened.
Have you asked the new guy?
I'm waiting for him to get settled, but he's got more on his plate than anyone's, what he's got.
But he's the one issuing the permit.
Right.
And he needs to learn also.
I agree. It was, it was on my agenda, but I'm just waiting, you know, you know, I've been here what, a month?
The position I was making from us here.
So what specific action is being requested of us with this, and you probably said that when I missed it?
No, I really was giving you information of, of inconsistencies in the zoning ordinance, yeah.
We seem to have.
I have another question.
Yeah.
Where are these, I mean, who has these different ordinances, I mean, did?
Everett Snowberger has, it's, it's not, I mean, it's one ordinance, it's versions, I guess, Everett has one that says one thing, and Mary Ann has one that says another thing. And they're both on the Board of Zoning Appeals. But I don't know what anybody else has, Everett is the one, Everett Silver, is the one who, who figured out that, oh my goodness, you know, these aren't saying the same things, how can we do?
You're saying there should be an ordinance in our ordinance book for that, or is it in the?
Well, we're twenty years.
Yeah.
Well.
I mean, where do you find, where do you find?
Bingo.
Bingo, I mean, I said bingo, this is.
I know, but.
I mean, where, where is the original one?
You don't know.
Well, this has been a problem prior to you got up here.
Beth has a codification book, which I just think is wonderful, uh, apparently Barry Emerson said all the ordinances needed to be codified before he left, and so, that's a starting point. That's, that was two thousand and ten, and I looked at that ordinance. But, you know, there have been some changes, uh, but not a lot.
We haven't found that one, because, I mean, and even in two thousand.